Roll call, Ms. Irene Martin.
Here.
Mr. James Benson.
Here.
Mr. Charles DeFuria.
Here.
And Commissioner Ray Vaughn.
We have four, I believe that is the quorum. We'll now go to item number four on the agenda. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, July 20th, 2017. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? If there were no additions or correction, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Abstain.
Mr. DeFuria.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
We'll now go to item agenda number five, annual election of officers. Which traditionally I say you don't have to be here to be elected. Do I have a nomination for the Chairman of the Oklahoma County Planning Commission?
I'll nominate Will Jones.
We have a nomination for Will Jones, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a nomination and a second, do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
We now go to our, the position of Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for the Vice Chair of the Committee?
I'll nominate Jim Benson.
I'll second.
We have a nomination and a second, do we have any other nominations or discussions? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
We now go to item number six, which is a deferred item. Discussion possible action to approve/deny the preliminary plat of the Meadows at MacArthur Park, PP 2015-01. Staff report.
Yes, this is the long-waited subdivision plat, I'm sorry, subdivision plat, I'm losing my notes here. I guess we left it back there in the office, but this is a subdivision that was started quite a few years ago. And this is a subdivision that had been held off because we couldn't appropriate sewer and water. There were some promises made and that didn't happen for the subdivision. And it's taken this timeframe to get it. They've gotten all of the agreements and contracts in place for them to go forward. And they're here to start their preliminary plat. They've met all our requirements.
And when will the final plat be approved then?
Not until the construction has started. This is the preliminary where they show their engineering, they've got water and got sewer.
Okay. Do we have anybody, any questions at all?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm looking at this, at this chart here, and it looks like there's, you know, there's some lines going across. Was that, was that a gas line, or I can't remember if it was, if it was this application, or if it was a different one where there was
I can speak to that.
Okay.
You're, the line that you see there that runs east to west is the gas line.
Okay.
The line that you see there that's on the northwest part of the property that's in blue, are overhead electric lines there, that's what that easement is.
All right, and was there any problem with that gas line, or I can't remember?
Well, they would, since you've seen this originally, they've actually reconfigured the south portion of that subdivision to address our concerns with the gas line.
Okay.
So what you see in this picture in front of you is the reconfiguration that everybody has agreed to.
Okay, all right, thanks Eric, appreciate that.
Are there any other questions of our staff?
I may add too, they also, all the bonds are in place, they were required to put in place for the subdivision to begin.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak for this development? Please state your name so our court can get that for record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name, my name is Sean Regan, I'm the attorney for this developer. I simply rose to say thank you very much, it's been a long journey. I appreciate your patience very, very much, I know you've gone above and beyond for us on this project. I thank Mr. Trumbo as well, who met with us recently and helped us through a couple of issues. And Mr. Brandt as well has worked with us greatly, and Mr. Gammon as well. So I just simply want to say thank you very much, it's been a long journey and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for this proposition? Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this? If not, I would accept the motion to approve or deny the preliminary plat of Meadows at MacArthur Park, PP 2015-01.
I'd like to make that motion to approve the preliminary plat of the Meadows at MacArthur Park, PP 2015-01.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any more discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Aye.
We'll now go on to agenda item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve/deny a zoning change from AA Agriculture and Rural Residential District to planned unit development, PUD 2017-02, to develop and operate a special events center, the Bamberhoff, Homerhoff, I think that's better pronunciations. Staff report.
Yes, this is a, a PUD for a piece of property where they intend to have weddings and reunions and items like that in a rural setting. I think what their whole hope is that they maintain a rural setting around these activities. They spelled out in the PUD what their hours are and what the types of activities that will go on in the property. And this signing them a PUD will allow for them to go on with any expansion or anything else they wanted to add to this. If they do so, of course, they will have to change the PUD. What they're relegated to this, whatever is stated in this PUD.
Are there any questions at all? Is there anyone who'd like to speak for this proposition? Please state your name and address so the court can get that for the record.
Good afternoon, Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, Yukon. Here with me today is the owners, Michael and Sharon Holland. So before using application, as was stated for a PUD for the Bamberhoff, it's approximately 40 acres at the southwest corner of Coffee Creek in May. The intent is to allow for a rural themed wedding and events venue to be operated on the existing family farm. On the property, there's a replica of a 400-year-old German stone barn, it's located in Bavaria. And this barn is going to serve as the indoor event space for the property. The typical events that they intend to have would include weddings, holiday office parties, birthday parties, reunions and such. There's no proposal to build any type of, you know, zoo amphitheater or something to, you know, an event center to that type of level. Just simply to have these smaller events with a rural setting on there. They want to utilize this existing barn to hold the weddings and dinners and such. So we have limited the uses in this PUD, they're limited to the current uses allowed in the agricultural and rural residential district, to a wedding events venue, and agricultural sales for produce and crops. This PUD does include several restrictions, including hours of operation, capacity, it addresses parking and lighting as well. As I said, the owners intend us to embrace the rural character of the property, they're not trying to change the rural nature of this area. And in fact, that's what this events venue is based on. We do understand that several neighbors submitted some letters yesterday afternoon. The owners did meet with a handful of the neighbors yesterday afternoon at their property to discuss it. I believe several, several neighbors may be here today to speak. And we would be happy answering questions at this time, and if you want to allow the neighbors to speak, we'd ask that, give an opportunity to respond to their questions afterwards. Be happy answering questions.
Any other, any questions?
I've got a lot of questions.
Okay, that's
I, I wonder if you want to address them, or do you want me to address those to the owners? Want to take them?
I'll, I'll take them.
Okay. I've looked at your, your PUD document, and I'll start with the sanitary sewer. This sanitary sewer is not available, and so you're relying on private septic systems, aerobic systems, other acceptable private systems as determined by DEQ. What, since you're not going to make any more development there, what do you have in place that is taking care of your sanitation?
There's currently a septic system on site, and depending on the size of the event, that may be needed to bring in some of the temporary portages or something to that effect.
So the, the current building that you hope to use is on the septic system?
Correct.
And it says that water is presently available from Deer Creek, are you on Deer Creek real water?
They are on Deer Creek real water, there's also a well that the existing residents uses.
Okay, well, the fact that your statement says it's available from Deer Creek doesn't mean you're on it. I was just making sure that you are in fact hooked up to Deer Creek water.
Correct.
That's correct, okay, thank you. I noticed that you, at your events, you provide a beverage service. I assume that means alcohol, and do you hire someone to bring that in, or do you do it yourselves? Or They value that license through the table commission.
So if alcohol should be provided at any events, they will have to provide a licensed bartender. In addition, a licensed commissioned security agent will have to be on site as well. We'd be willing to stipulate that in the SPUD.
All right.
PUD.
I notice you project a maximum attendance or use of 300 people. And you're, you're planning, if I understand this correctly, 16 parking places?
That's correct. In keeping with the rural feel of this property, they don't want to put in large parking lots and take away from that look. There's some adjacent fields adjacent to the driveway that they would park residents on, or attendees on. And basically, the required parking spaces would be located closer to the event center, can be used for handicap spaces and such. So overflow parking would be in the adjacent field there.
Parking in a field?
So.
In inclement weather?
And obviously, they've got to be able to get people in and out to be successful, and so they're aware of the, the conditions out there and
All right. I noticed your, your event space is 3,200 square feet. I'm, I'm not real clear on how many people can fit into 3,200 square feet, but 300 sounds like a lot.
So they do have the ability to have some outside events, the receptions and that, and such would be in that event barn. So for the larger events, they would have to utilize some, some outdoor space.
But your PUD says you won't utilize any other structures except the, the current?
No other structures, but they will potentially, for a larger event, would utilize
The structure that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay. All right. So you would overflow into, into the outside, I guess, if there were more people that could fit in the
Yes, sir, a larger event would probably, would most likely be an outdoor type wedding, where they would have a reception or something smaller inside then.
But 300 is the total you would project for either indoor or outdoor?
That'd be the largest, yes.
How tall is the current structure that you all intend to use?
I believe it's somewhere around 52 or 53 feet in height, the barn is.
So that's why you use 55 feet, isn't it?
Yes, so there's no intent to build any other structures that would be, be that high.
Okay. And those days of operation, seven days a week? Which, you know, is sometimes common, I suppose. The hours of operation, I didn't quite understand, 8:00 AM to midnight, except for special events?
So most of the weddings and events would be limited to midnight. Basically, the music would be off at 11:00 PM, and they have from 11:00 PM to midnight for cleanup and to get guests out of there. On the chance that there's a, some different type of event that needs to go out there, they were asking for some flexibility in that. But the, the standard events that they would, would entertain would be over with by midnight.
I didn't see anything in here that limited the, the actual event to 11:00 PM.
Well, so the vent is, is, with getting everybody out off the site and being completely over would be midnight. But their typical concept would be to end the music at 11:00 PM. We would be willing to stipulate that in the, in the PUD.
I think it'd be helpful to have it in here.
Okay.
And then the same, the same thing with the maximum capacity excluding special events. You said a minute ago that 300 would be the max, but that would mean, and I, I'm not sure whose idea it was to add except in special events, because that basically says there's no limit, because that's what you do in special events. I would recommend that be removed.
They're agreeable to removing that?
Okay, thank you. There's no, no mention in here about fireworks, but on your website, there are a number of photographs taken with aerial fireworks. And I think there's a couple of companies that are recommended for use, if you want to use fireworks out there. Could you address that?
Typically, most of the fireworks that have been held on the site have been in association with 4th of July, those kind of things. If one of the wedding events wanted to have fireworks or something to that effect, they would entertain that option, it would have to be by a licensed and insured fireworks specialist.
Okay, but it would be aerial
Correct.
Things like you see at 4th of July.
Correct.
There was one picture, a very beautiful picture of a couple with a aerial, you know, firework going off behind them. Oh. So we're, we're planning 16 parking spaces, but it also provides that the private driveway of the primary residence may be counted toward these 16 parking spaces.
There's some existing driveways on the property right now that have availability for parking. And so we would just like to be able to utilize some of that space towards the required number. As they're close to the residence, they're close to the event center, could be utilized for that event. Basically, still trying to keep within the rural feel and trying to avoid putting in a full-blown parking lot.
I, I can appreciate that, I grew up in rural Edmunds. But if you put 300 people on a space, it kind of loses its rural status, in my opinion. Do we have any, what are regulations regarding parking requirements?
The way those parking requirements are set up is, is based on the square footage of the building that they're utilizing. So the way it's set up is, they're required to have one parking space for 200, for each 200 square feet. So that's how they've come up with 16 in this case.
So I read that, so one car with two people in it would qualify for 400 square feet of a venue?
Well, I understand your concern, but that's how the regulation is written at this time, so that's what we, we go by.
And we feel that we'll be able to make the parking work. There are some, some existing wedding events venues in the area that utilize similar circumstances for the parking and such. And we're just kind of trying to do something that's similar to what they're doing. And obviously, you know, the concerns with the hard surface parking out there are, you know, are considerations that have to be met when scheduling events and, and
Well, you can, you can do hard cer, hard surface is considered gravel, you know, so. I mean, that's not expensive nor a particularly egregious look, I wouldn't think, in a rural area, so.
For the rural ambiance though, they're still trying to, they would like to maintain the grassland and the trees and such out there. If parking does become a problem, then that's something we can obviously look into is putting some gravel out there. But at this time, the intent is to keep it as rural as we can.
We require, at least our regulation requires, that the required number of parking spots have to be hard surface. So according to our regulations, hard surface is either cement or asphalt. And we do have some events, an event venue on the east side of the county. What they've done is they've hard surfaced the required number of spots, but then they have gravel for any overflow. And we're okay with that, but as far as what is required, that has to be hard surface according to the regulation.
What about driveways, is that considered an appropriate parking place?
Like you mentioned, we do have some events venues that have decided to use a driveway as, since it is hard surface as parking. And again, we're okay with that as long as it's hard surface being asphalt or concrete.
That's all the questions I've got for right now, thank you.
Sir? Are there any questions?
I, I've got a couple of questions. One, I'm, I'm concerned about people with disabilities. And you've got, you know, the few parking spaces, but a great number of people with disabilities attend weddings and special events. And if they have to park out in the grass and try to get across the grass with walkers or with wheelchairs, that's not accessibility. So the gravel, you know, makes sense, I know it's not in here, but
And the owners have put some thought into that, and they've got some of the UTB vehicles can transport people. And so on larger events where there is the overflow parking on the field, they have the ability to, you know, pick people up their cars and take them up to the event. And so that's one way to mitigate that, that they've looked at. And then obviously, we'll meet the required number of handicap spaces and utilize the hard surface spaces and spaces closest to the event center for the people with disabilities.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just to make sure I heard correctly, you are on section 911 restrictions striking excluding special events from hours of operation capacity?
That's correct.
Any other questions? We will allow everyone else to speak now contra, and well, I think at the end of the, the contra arguments, we'll allow you to speak to them, all right? We would request that everyone who's coming up to speak, I've actually looked at, what is it, 47 letters? We've had a lot of input from the neighborhood, we appreciate that because this is part of the thing. And just wanted to make sure that we understand that we're an advisory panel. We advise what we think the county commissioners do. The county commissioners, in fact, vote on everything we do, and that's what makes, gives it legal status. Okay, so we're going to let you talk as much as you want, would like you to try to keep it to three minutes. And the repetition, sometimes the same things might not be necessary, but it's up to you. Thank you, and who would like to start again? Again, we need your name and address for the court.
Sure. Good afternoon, my name is Ken Kearns, I am a current homeowner of Summit Lake Estates. My address is 22092 Golden Elm Circle. I'm also here to represent the homeowners, the homeowners association, as president of that association, and to express some of our concerns, some of those have already been expressed by some of the commissioners, Ray and Irene. And we appreciate that. I have to tell you, the more I hear about some of your questions, the more concerned I am. Such as the ones where they, I think it was stated that they would use an existing barn structure, and they wouldn't build any new structures. It's my understanding that the barn they're speaking of was just completed here within the last few months. If I'm not correct, I remember seeing the roof going up and saying, I wonder what that structure is. So the fact that they're not going to build a new existing structure, it's like they've already built the structure, and now we're going to come in and try to get approval for this event. Because my understanding is they've already had a couple of events, and it's caught somebody's attention. So now we're coming in, just my, my impression, to try to get approval after the fact. But a couple of the concerns were that the number of, the number of attendees, that 300, excluding special events. I have that same concern while they're in this special event business, when they exclude special events, it could be 1,000. To go to, from 8:00 AM to midnight, excluding special events, could go to 3:00 in the morning, playing loud music, serving alcohol. One of my concerns that I can envision, a big party going on there till 2, 2 or 3 o'clock, or probably, maybe he said stop at 10 or 11. And we have a Deer Creek football game, basketball game, let out around that time or somewhere thereabouts. And we have a lot of teenage drivers in the neighborhood, a lot of upcoming teenage drivers. They would be coming home down that same street that those so-called heart-takers of beverages were leaving, and I could just see disaster coming. So that, that really concerns me there. I think most of the other things that have already been talked about, the lighting, the ground lighting, the, the noise level, no restrictions on noise level, I understand, I don't know if that's true, I haven't actually read the permit or the, the PUD. And I really don't know the difference between, I, I understood this was supposed to be a special use permit, and now I'm hearing the PUD, and I really don't know what the difference is, if one is more restrictive than the other, but I'm, I don't know, one's better, I don't know. So I guess you guys could maybe help or make the help answer those questions. I think everything else
A, a PUD will be limited to what he says in this document.
Sure.
A special use is usually something that we, once a PUD is approved, it's approved forever, okay? When a special use permit is approved, it's only approved for a certain amount of time.
Sure.
And has to come back to this organization and the county commissioners to allow it to continue.
For each time they wanted to do it, I suppose. We're also unsure if they have concerts, I think it, it had mentioned live music or DJs, that I don't know if that included loud concerts going on till 10, 11, 12, and 9, so. Anyway, those are my primary concerns. We have approximately 50 homeowners in this, in the phase one of the addition, those are all full of houses. In phase two, there's about 100 lots there, there's about 30 to 35 houses already built there. My understanding is about half those remaining lots have been sold, so there's probably 30, 35 lots that have not been sold. And so one of my concerns also was, only about 15 of us in the neighborhood received letters of notification. I just found out a couple of days ago. And I'm guessing those, those lots along May Avenue, the ones that's directly adjacent to that would probably be lots owned by the current developers still, I don't know which ones are sold or which ones not. So it just kind of concerned me that very few of us knew about this in a timely manner, so. I guess that's up to us, but I didn't, I didn't receive a letter, I don't know how, what the process is, notify everybody in the neighborhood, surrounding neighbors, or just a few people, I don't know.
The, the way the notification works is by state statute. So basically, when the application came before us, they brought a certified adjacent property owner's So basically, when the application came before us, they brought a certified adjacent property owner's list. Basically, the way it works is, is that we go from each property line three hundred feet, and we notify those individuals. If fifteen individuals have been notified within that three hundred feet, then it stops. If fifteen people have not been notified, we continue to a thousand feet, and whomever's in that thousand feet gets notified, and it stops from there. So that's basically set up by state statute.
How do they know if they've been notified? Just by the fact that they were sent a letter, or acknowledgement of that letter, or something, or...
We send them certified. No, sorry, we don't, no, those are just mailed out.
So there's really no way to know if those folks even received them, or if those, those lots, they went to a lot owner or, or a homeowner? There's really no way to even know that, so...
The abstract, I mean, it's certified by the abstract company or by the county's services office, but that is a certain timeframe.
Right.
That is the, and that's, that's the way it is. We also, uh, notified by the general record, in the newspaper, and, uh, that's always required by statute.
Well, my concern with that is, even though, say, fifteen people were notified on the adjacent lots, it's concerning to all of us in the whole neighborhood, and the neighborhood across the street, so it's not just those few, few people. So if we'd had, had more of a notice, and more time, we could look into it further and, and get some better answers. I know a couple of folks did meet with the homeowners last night, said it was a beautiful place, but they did tell them, we're going to protest this, so...
Obviously, the statutory, they assume that fifteen, at least fifteen people, they're worried they'll get outdoors by now, so...
Sure, okay.
That's the rule that I follow.
I appreciate that. I think that's all I have, but we have a couple of other homeowners that would like to...
Of course, and if you have something else to add later on, you're welcome to come back.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Who would like to be second?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Tyler a question?
Please.
Tyler, no, Tyler, okay. Well, I do want to ask you, uh, Mr. Kearns, if you don't mind, is your house shown in, in this area over here in the flat? Is your lot in the... Okay? Since we are aware that there have been some events out there.
Sure.
Uh, and obviously, from the photographs on the website, there have been fireworks. Have you ever seen anything or heard anything from that piece of property, uh, from your property?
I have not. Personally, I have not.
Okay, I wouldn't think so.
I'm out, usually out of town on the Fourth of July, so weekends, go to the lake, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Tyler, let me ask you a question that he raised. Uh, let's, uh...
Let's assume that all of these lots right here are owned by ABC Building Company.
That's one notification, that's what you're asking?
Yeah, I, I, I am asking that. So if you, if you find multiple ownerships, and you send mailings to each of those, you just send one?
If one person owns all six of those lots.
Yeah.
That's one, okay.
Okay, so you go deeper, and deeper, and deeper, until you get fifteen different individual names? To the thousand feet?
Yeah.
Oh, if you can't, if you can't, well, okay.
If you don't get fifteen, you gotta continue going out, uh...
All right, so in theory...
You send notices to everybody within a thousand feet, within the border, or the...
The border.
The border, alright. So you have a thousand feet, uh, out like so. And let's say, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you've got those, but the rest of them, that's not the law. But it would be one over.
One over.
Yeah.
So if you don't get your fifteen, you continue.
So it could, yeah, so it, it might not actually reach fifteen different people.
True.
Okay.
There are some situations where you might have fifty-five people around, but you only get fifteen.
Okay.
So you don't get everybody on the list.
I understand. Once you, once you hit your fifteen, you're good.
If that's all that's fifteen.
All right, thank you.
Now, sometimes, the, in a three-hundred-foot radius, you get more than fifteen, we, we take them all.
Okay.
They're in that first...
The, the three hundred is gonna get noticed regardless?
Yeah, they don't get noticed.
Even if there's twenty of them? Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Who would like to speak next, Ben?
Hi, my name's Barry Cunningham. I've talked to some of you all before, so, um, feel free to holler if you've got questions.
And an address, please.
Oh, yeah, my address is two two zero four two Black Walnut Circle. So I talk kinda loud, so I'm, I'm gonna stand right next to the mic, per se. Um, gonna touch on a few of the things, or a few different things, even Ken did. Um, I had the, uh, I guess, I shouldn't say privilege, but I was on the homeowners association for, uh, Summit Lake Estates for several years, unfortunately for me. Um, so I've been through this a little bit, had some ideas, worked with some different people, actually talked to the owners a couple of different occasions, and they were very nice. So this isn't a personal approach, um, this is just, you know, how I feel about our, our investments. Um, it does feel a little bit, and I know Ken kinda touched on that, that we're kinda trying to work uphill a little bit, and the fact that it's already established, it's already built. They've already had events, they've got a website, they're marketing. It just, it, it's frustrating, and it's nothing, I'm not, again, it's nothing personal, it is frustrating. Ideally, and, you know, nothing's ever ideal, or always ideal, but similar to what we've done in some developments around there, is we are having the ability to meet with the owner, prospective owner, or builder before, and talk about, here's what we're wanting to do, what are some things we can do to mitigate, to help. We're past that now. We're basically a yes-no. Um, I understand you guys had some people over yesterday, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't know if I, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't matter. But I do feel like we're playing a little bit of catch-up, and that is frustrating as a homeowner. It just is. So, um, that's not anybody's fault. I'm not trying to blame anybody, but it does feel like that. Um, so, uh, with that being said, that cuts on parking. Um, I love all my neighbors. They're all great, but some are idiots. Um, they just are. I'm an idiot sometimes, too. My point of that is, you're gonna have customers, they're gonna have customers that are idiots as well. They just will, especially when they're paying money, big money, because it's extremely nice. Um, they're gonna park where they wanna park. They are. I know you're gonna try to sell them to go this way, and I mean, I, I understand that, but it's not gonna happen all the time, especially with parking restrictions, some of those things. Um, I've been to weddings. You all been to weddings? Most people don't try to get there early. They try to get there on time. So trying to get three hundred, I don't know what, how many heads per car you get, one point five, one point two, two point, I don't know, it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty cars, plus or minus. It's gonna be challenging, going on a two-lane road. Um, again, just don't see it happening like it, you know, in a perfect reality, it's gonna happen. Just don't. Uh, my home, just, nothing matters, but... Go up that first, do I, don't say, no, not, not on First Street, so, uh... So, anyway, um, First Street, directly across, COVID fact, um, well, there was a point, right, right, up, right there, down, down, that's me. So, um, that's my home. You'd ask Ken the question, have you heard things? I have. I love fireworks. I, the more the merrier. Doesn't bother me a bit. But as president of the HOA within Summit Lake Estates, a lot of my neighbors don't like them. We actually put restrictions within our covenants. On specific days, you can shoot fireworks at specific times, which their, other than two days a year, you know, their guidelines are outside of what we consider normal. What we want is homeowners in that area. Um, I love them personally. Like I said, I don't care. The more the merrier, but that's not the case for our HOA. Um, trying to touch on everything here, quickly. I know I talked fast. Um, and I talked about it a little bit, but I mean, as far as monitoring, the party or the event or whatever else, I don't know how that's gonna happen. We have neighbors, so on the picture here, to the east, to the right, yes, to the east, or to the right, you can kinda see in the little kinda grayed-out area, there's a little structure there. That's gonna be, I think, like Hidden Creek or Hidden Lake development, so it's a development at some point. Already been, um... You see, just, just below two twenty, there's a little structure right there. But anyway, one, it doesn't matter who it is, what it is. It's a development, um, that will happen at some point. Nothing's happened yet, but there is a family living there in an old kinda house. They've been loud, obnoxious, shot fireworks, shotguns. We were told to call the county sheriffs, which we've done. They'll be helpful. So I would assume they would be the ones trying to enforce these rules, for the most part, related to traffic and et cetera. Um, again, not to bash them, I'm not bashing them, it's not the intent, but, you know, about two calls, three calls into them shooting guns and fireworks behind us, they said, there's not anything we can do, sorry, folks. And that's, I, again, my fear in that is, who's gonna monitor three hundred? Or who is, if it's three fifty, three ten, three twenty, four hundred, no, I mean, who's gonna be out there just counting heads? No one. It's not gonna happen. Um, again, enforcement of it, I, I, I don't know how it's gonna happen. Again, I'm not trying to bash Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department or whomever, but we've had, um, three neighbors, I think, so far, listed their houses on the far side because of the neighbors behind us. And I would suspect if something similar to this goes on there, I mean, we'll have that same effect. It hurts property values. It does. That's why we're here today, is for you guys to help us protect those. Um, talk about seven days a week, that's not a restriction type of events. You guys have talked about that. Lights, again, there have been a couple of events there, a couple of neighbors have had, not incidents, nothing bad has happened, but where people are trying to get into their spot, or get into the, the driveway, I mean, you can see in the picture, I can't really see it on there, it's talking about the unit, the PUD. Um, but where it comes out from May, there's, you know, it's kinda hidden. I mean, it's nice, it's nothing, not bad, it's kinda hidden. And the existing events they've had, people have had difficulty finding it. As you come, let's say, if you're coming north on May Avenue, before you get to it, you're actually coming over a hill and down, so it's at the crest of a hill. Um, it's not ideal. People's trying to stop, Kearns, so they're gonna have to have some additional lighting, and signage, I think, is up to a hundred square feet. That's a ten-by-ten foot sign, I think. Is that correct? I don't know if I heard that correctly. It's a pretty good sign, and it's gonna be pretty lit up. It just changes the, that's not an urban, I mean, that's an urban feel. That's not a rural feel. It's just not. Um, noise, so to give you an example, um, phase one is kinda the, I guess, top right portion of Summit Lake Estates. And then the bottom ha- half of that, basically, or bottom two-thirds of that, is what we consider phase two. Um, there is more distance between houses in phase one and houses in phase two that I received several calls on for too much noise, just on a back patio with ten people, than there is between the proposed development and, I don't even count, but let me count, one, two, three, four, five, fifteen, it's twenty homes in Summit Lake Estates alone. Doesn't, I mean, again, there, I know they've got trees, I know they're gonna try to build firms and things like that, but it's, it's, it's closer than neighbor to neighbor. I, Barry, why the hell they, you know, their music's on, or this is on. It's, it gets loud. Again, going back to the enforcement, who's gonna be the, the noise police? It's not gonna happen. Um, kinda reading through the planning survey, I know, if anybody cares, but, you know, the, you all, the planning commission, or the, I guess it was the planning commission, came out and had surveys a year and a half ago, roughly, and, you know, the findings of those surveys, the number one concern was what? Surveys related to concerns of neighbors in Oklahoma County was what? Anybody know? What? Number one issue was what? Traffic. Traffic's no more concern. So first and foremost in that field, so it was, it had the highest percentage of people concerned is traffic. So again, two-lane road, hundred and fifty-plus vehicles, just doesn't make sense. Um, talk about monitoring. I know we've kinda touched on rural residential agriculture, they wanted to change that, but that's, again, the intent of why we moved out there. I mean, was it to move into a rural area away from the city, but close enough? Yes. Was it to move across the street from that? No. If we did, we would've moved somewhere else. Not, I mean, that's, that's not why we live there. Um... Trying to think of anything else to add. The only other thing I would say, I'm just gonna read, and I'm not a big reader, but, uh, I kinda talk, talk off the top of my head, but just, I know the, the master plan is just that, it's a plan, it's a guide, it's not law, but just to take a couple of excerpts from that, that were written by, you know, you all collectively, or a group you guys hired previous. Um, kinda related to commercial land use. Encourage commercial development to meet the needs of county residents. Locate commercial activities on major arteries and highways. Encourage high-quality commercial and office development along the state highway seventy-four. Minimize adverse effects on adjacent land uses, okay? That's what it says. That's kinda, again, there's more there, but that's, in summary, that defines what commercial land use. And if you read the, um, residential, shall I do real quick? Again, I'm not a big reader, but it just helps, because my, my memory's not that great, but... Encourage residence development that is compatible with agricultural and natural lands. Protect the character in established residential neighborhoods, promote the quality of life, uh, and pride of ownership. So again, that's why we're here, is we're asking you to help us protect our investments. We've been there. We didn't build there after the fact. This came into us. We're just asking for your help and support in, um, in denying it. Uh, it's not something I would look towards trying to restrict different things, because it won't happen. Five years from now, their life changes, and they sell to someone else, and, you know, they have no plans for an amphitheater, but, and the next guy puts one in and says, oh, by the way, I built it, I'm asking for forgiveness, not, not permission. And we're there. It's, it's a very slippery slope, very hard to stop, um, and just would ask for your support and, and saying, you know, thanks for no thanks, so... Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matt Thompson. I live at two two zero zero three White Pine Circle, and I'm on the second street in phase one. My backyard literally faces directly towards this property. And I can tell you that on any given day, just jumping in, I'm gonna try to take a deeper dive on some of these pieces, because I've been involved, and I went to the site last night, was invited by the group. Um, I can hear a rooster crow from their house. So the noise level issue is there, and I welcome anybody to just come sit on my backyard and hear the traffic going up and down May. When we, uh, Barry was talking about that issue with people driving down the road and not finding the entrance, I was actually driving down that road, coming down the May slope, going north on May, and they had an event going on, and people could not figure out what the entrance was, and so the road stacked up all the way back up the hill to a well, and one of us almost got rear-ended. So very real-life example of just one of two events they had last year where that's an issue. This was all discussed. We actually, uh, were invited last night at six oh two. I got a text from the group to come out and meet with them about this for the first time. And we've been neighbors for a long time, and, uh, love the facility, love looking at that barn and that windmill. It's one of the best views you've seen out there. But when they have fireworks, we see it. I'm also a fan of fireworks. Love the shows. Do I wanna have a fireworks show every Saturday from now until eternity? No. Not really. I mean, I like them, but I don't like them that much. So there, there are many things, when we go back to the, without exceptions, or, uh, with certain exceptions. And we discussed this last night as we met with, uh, the HON. Um, the fact that there are no exceptions leaves it completely open-ended to be anything it wants to be. And one thing I've learned from this group here, you all like to see more detail, more specifics about egress, about water and sewage, about the actual use of the property. And we had a very open conversation last night. It was very cordial, very clear, but this is a fully-built event center. It is ready to go right now. It can hold events today. I come from the commercial retail background, work for Mr. Love, Tom Love, right? So I've seen these facilities, seen these offices, I've seen these bathrooms. It is a completely commercial and set up, ready-to-go building right now. And they are holding events. That, I think that's part of the issue here, is that we, we went through the whole notification piece and how that happened. This simply, there's been a relationship with Barry and HON in the past. This should've been addressed sooner and been a lot more transparent. But during my meeting last night, I got a very clear idea of what the true strategic plan is for this facility. And it is not just a Thursday, Friday night event center. It is not gonna be, uh, we've all been to a wedding, and I've been to a few, and I do drink, I'm just gonna let you all know that, and thank God we have Uber. But these parties don't end at midnight. They don't end until everybody leaves the facility. There's a lot of logistical, uh, planning that is just not really thought of here. When we went in last night, and we drove in, we parked on the driveway, and we had to drive around to their outflow of their entertainment building to turn around. So you all were just all talking about parking and, and where to park. There's no parking there. They mentioned that they were gonna do gravel, but now that I learned that they could use their driveway, they could park all the way down to May, which we brought up last night. And they said that was not an intent, but it sounds like they could use those as parking spots all the way down to the street, which is again, another concern. Because their entranceway is not very easy to get to. If you drive by that entranceway, it goes up a slope and it's back off the road. And while they did mention they would get sign in, and she has great taste, I have no doubt the sign would probably be good, but because there's not a, really a limitation on the sign, how do we know what we're gonna get? Are we gonna have a bright light shining straight at our house twenty-four hours a day, as it turns on? I mean, there's so many ifs and, and unwritten things with this. And that's why we keep going back to, with these exceptions, they could do anything they want. So, uh, trying to give you some deep-dive, real-life examples of how this affects our neighborhood, uh, and again, many of us just found out in the last thirty-six hours this was happening. That building was just built. I watched it go up. It, it was just built. We got to tour it last night. Fully functional bar, tables, everything. They could do an event tomorrow. And it sounds like that's, again, ahead of the horse. I thought you had to get approval to do these kinda things. Now, again, if it's a private home, and they're just having parties for themselves, that's awesome. What a great setup. But it's not meant for that. And it was very clear last night that that is the case. So I just bought my house two years ago. My daughter is seven years old. I don't plan on moving ever again if I can help it. I've lived out in Deer Creek for fifteen years, been in... I've lived out in Deer Creek for 15 years, been in y'all's area, Dennis Settlers Crossing, a mile away, I've seen this whole thing develop and come up, and it just comes down to the fact that we're, I mean, I'm being very open, I would like this to be denied, I'd like them to go back to the drawing board, come up with a plan, give us more detail, be more communicative and transparent, because we're just really getting hit with this, and there were comments last night about, let's turn on our music. Well, I welcome them to turn on that music and play it our direction. It's gonna reverberate right back, and everybody's gonna hear it, every down to, every scratch of the DJ. It's gonna be a real noise issue, it's gonna be a traffic issue, there are, again, many logistical things they have not thought of from an event piece. When we talk about this parking thing that Barton brought up earlier, there's room to do it way back on the backside, but it's also gonna be, are they gonna have to build a gravel parking lot, they're gonna have to shuttle people, there's just a lot of things out there. So I hope that helps just drive a little bit of the actual real life effect of having that issue on May where I almost got rear ended, my kid was in my car. It was like 7:30 or something, I don't know, it was a deal. And I brought that up last night, didn't get into it in much detail, but it's a concern, and I hope that's a good example of not thinking about that traffic for alone on the street. Again, traffic is loud, I'm trying to make sure I go over everything that I was thinking about from what you talked about, and I'm also going back to our conversation last night. If we'd had this conversation two or three months ago, this could be a different situation, but we're just now finding out about it, it's kind of sneaking up on us, not appreciated. Could've been done a lot differently, and while the meeting was appreciated last night, during the meeting, and I was very open about this, the conversation started with only Friday, Thursday, and Friday nights, then it became, oh, we could do it Tuesday, you know? So it's completely not accurate, I think, to what the plan is. So I'm hoping that, no matter what comes out of this, we get a better accurate plan from you all, or guidance from you all to get that from the group, or just simply to deny it when it's actually going forward.
Wait a minute, come back. Can you point out where your property is on that?
From the touch.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see it over there very well, but if you could.
Let's see. It's directly down from the field on 120. Do they have three houses?
Okay, all right. Now, another question, I mean, I'm looking at a picture here, is this the barn, the event barn that you're talking about?
Yes, there's more buildings further this way.
Okay, but is this the 3,200 square foot building that they're gonna have the events in?
Well, there are multiple buildings to have the events in. There's not just that building.
They can only have them in one building.
That's the building that you see there that they're gonna have the events in, yes.
Okay, so this building, I mean, there's Ivy growing up on that, so it's been there quite a while.
Yes.
So the new building, they're not gonna hold events in that new building?
Well, it depends on how you consider the event. So that building right there has multiple banquet tables, you know, like you'd see from one of the catering groups that are all sitting in there, big open floor, a bunch of open doors and so on.
If you go out of that building and go the best direction, which is north, there's another building, and it has two or three stories, it has full bars that you walk in through, and then there's another building that has bathrooms.
Well, okay, I'm confused now, because this PUD says it's just one 3,200 square foot.
That's it.
And you're talking about other buildings that have bars?
Yeah, they gave us a tour last night.
There are six barns and a residence, but this is the only building that they've asked to use, and the only building in their firm, in their special design statement, their planned unit development statement, that they would use.
Okay.
There's another building that has a bridal area for the brides and the bridesmaids to be in, there's another separate building with, or I believe it's a separate building, and again, we can go through that layout.
Okay, well, maybe I have a question for the, oh, okay. Okay, well, that EX means existing private, okay. Okay, well, see, and my question is, if these are, and I maybe like to ask the owner, if these are new buildings with bars set up, and if it's not gonna be used for the events, why, I mean, why put up new buildings with all these facilities like they were gonna be used for events?
Yeah, those new buildings are right here, I mean, I'm trying to give you that version of stuff, obviously, we parked right here, this is where I told you we had to turn around, and that's where all the tables are.
Let's let the app answer that question.
I mean, my question is, okay, is what he said accurate? In other words, these new buildings that they're set up, they have bars in there, and looks like there's facilities there for, to have events?
So.
But they're not included? That's what I, I'm a little puzzled.
The event space is to be that 3,200 square foot barn that we saw the picture of, it's on the screen there. There's two other private barns that are just private barns for the residents, there's some, well, there's two in that vicinity, there's two more private barns further to the west. You've got the private residence, and then on the, kind of the northeast of everything, there's an existing private barn that has some restaurants in it. And so it's basically just storage, things for them, it's not part of the event space. Now, the barn to the back, which I think is what he's talking about, is open, there's a bar back there, but the main event space is the 3,200 square foot barn, that's where the tables would be, that's where the, any of the receptions and that kind of stuff would take place.
Okay, so the new, this new building that has a bar in it, like a bar meaning to serve drinks? I don't understand.
I'm liable. I'd like, actually, like to rest of homeowners that have, like, so to hear those, so I can explain. This is a barn, a large barn, I built that in 2009. This is my barn, my parents lived here, I bought this back in 2003, before summer late, was an addition for the house. This is a pole barn, this used to be my equivalent barn, this was not built to be an event center, this was built to be my personal barn. I did plan to have my daughter's wedding, which was about 14 years later, after our barn, I had planned to have, and I do have that in mind, we had one other official event that there was with one of my friends, who would be allowed to get married, we've not accepted a penny from anybody that's ever had anything after. This is a pole barn, this is where I cut my tractors, my tractor, my kids' food, I had a little wood bar that I just built for my daughter's wedding. This is the main barn, this is the large, open front barn with a second story that goes up 20 feet, where we had a reception. There's a, what Mr. Thompson is referring to, we built another barn right here, did we have family or you? German, we have lots of families, you have families, pork supply, 200 people, my family. We have a bathroom, and the initial concrete mark is another storage barn. We built that for, oh, we planned to move out there in two years, my parents are 88, 79. They're not gonna be there, our plan is to move there, that's our complete intent. And we continue to plan to have the Hawn family here, and so we wanted to have a nice place, we have an apartment up there, so we can stay there, so families and relatives can stay there when they come to visit. We have about a 3,200 square foot house. Now, let me just say this, I'm in heated agreement with most of what they're saying. I also agree that our requests are too broad. We're quiet people, this is not our primary business, my wife and I both have full-time jobs, this is something so we can keep the farm. Farm's expensive, the packages are expensive, it's unreasonable, but Deer Creek packages are expensive, and this is so, our hope is to keep this a farm in perpetuity. I've got three daughters, I want them to keep it in their family. I don't like parties personally, I don't go to parties, I'm not a drinker, I tolerate that very little, and I even tolerate DUIs even less. Our plan is to have two policemen out there, it's required. We, this is an event that's supposed to open next year, so we are being proactive in the sense of, this is something that's supposed to open 2018, maybe 2009? But we are being proactive, and we built all this for us, and then this, our daughter's wedding was just an incredible success, we've had almost hundreds of people come to ask us if we would allow them to have their wedding, and that's fine, I want to share this place. My goal is to share it with neighbors, they're allowed in to come up, they have picnic, I even thought of a farmer's market, but my goal is to keep, we own the whole 150 acres, we could go back to the original plan, if you don't mind, if we knew all the land or out of all the bridges, we'd like to keep all of the farms, and that's our inevitable goal, and this is one way that we can afford to do that. We do want to have a farm out there, but we also, our requirement, hopefully you've been with me, we have kind of a contract that we've been creating, in case there are weddings, in any event, we want these things to end for the most part 11, and everybody to be out of there past midnight. It's open at eight to brides, whatever, mother-in-laws, whatever, get out there and start creating whatever they want. I mean, I want it quiet, my, this was originally going to be a tree farm, I didn't know our soil sucked so bad. If the tree farm's not successful, that's not gonna sustain. We planned it, 750, a lot of all these pines along this higher pathway, double standard road to create, I mean, I don't want, I don't do, it's not exactly what I have to do, but initially we had a big wall here, because I wanted the whole thing, certainly for not that measure, all these houses kind of come off, there's May Avenue, which is the high point, our wedding venue on our farm is the low point, you can't really, you see the top of the barn, this isn't something that's up on a hill laughing out, this is something that's in the valley. But I have minimal tolerance for noise, I want it to be done, I want it to be done by 11 o'clock at night, I don't want to listen to noise. My parents are out there, they live out there, all the time, they don't want the noise. I plan to live out there, I don't want this, I want this to be done, but I want something, this is something my wife and I decided to do since we've had so many clients, and I think our interests are absolutely 100% aligned with you all. I mean, we want to be, number one, good stewards, we want to be good neighbors, period, we want to have an adequate relationship, but we also want to be good stewards of the property, we want to keep it a farm. We have somebody call us, we talked about this last night, we have somebody call us about every three to four months, a developer, that wants to buy and wants to create housing on all of this 48 acres up here, unfortunately, not good housing, we still want to live here. But if we can't figure out some way to make money from this, like, we're gonna have to sell it. And we don't want, we don't want a tract of 80, 100 houses in there. I wasn't super happy with this, you know, but they've done a great job, I mean, this is progress, if you had come to me 15 years ago when I bought this and said, can we put these here, I said, hell no, I want to keep this a farm, just like you guys want to keep this a farm. But it's been a great pump, you've done a great job, and you've got beautiful houses, you've done wonderful, and we want to keep that. And so I, my recommendation, what I would like to do, I think this is, I would recommend this not happening, I would recommend that we meet with the homeowners, because honestly, what's good for them will be good for us, at the end of the day. We want to be good neighbors, we don't want to be the isol, we want to create beauty out there. We want them to be able to like it and come over and share it. We're all about sharing, we're all about keeping a farm. And so that's what I would recommend, because it sounds like, we initially talked about whether we should invite people over, I'm a shy person, I wouldn't hold with people, but we want to keep this, we want to keep this, we've got a farm, it's sold right above to the north, it's been a farm, that's right, that's our plan, we want to keep all this a farm, my kids want to keep it a farm, I want my grandkids to stay out there, I want to keep it a farm, I don't want the house to be locked, I don't want things locked. Ours, lights, hopefully will, it's just being about to fund it, it's on, our lights all told, or hopefully the four strands, only you can see one strand, we don't want to put up lights, the only other light I wouldn't want to put up is you can see a windmill, I want to shine it down so people have a pathway to walk. It won't be one shining yellow, it'll be one shining red. My purpose is not, you know, I can see the football lights from the, I don't want that, no people want that. My goal is to shut this down, I want to go to bed, if it's a fireworks issue, I understand, that's not a deal breaker for us, I'm not a big fan of fireworks all year round also, and I'm happy to shut those down.
He goes back to like what we said about perpetuity, and everything is so open ended, you have the plan, and we talked about your plan for the one light, and that's where a lot of our concern came from, because the events have those lights.
If I can make a suggestion here, we're on item number seven, and item number six was what we call a deferred item. It sounds like that we have very well-meaning people speaking in calm tones, if you would like to defer your item to another meeting, I think that might be the, in my view, one of the best things to do at this time.
I just feel, and I, here again, I want, I want the neighbors to be happy with this place, I want the neighbors to use it, I want them to be proud of it, I want it to be a picture that can look out to them that they want to be a partner. I don't want another neighborhood to get one. And so, I mean, that would be my purpose, because I'd like to meet with the homeowners.
If we could have our attorney speak, please?
I think it would be a good idea to defer this as well, see if you can reach an agreement as to lighting, hours of operation, fireworks operations, et cetera. My concern is, is that the PUD encompasses this huge area, but only seems to address the event center. If in your PUD you could further refine the use of any other structure, I think that might help the commission's understanding of parking needs, ingress egress, potential traffic, and would also protect and define the future use of those other structures. You should express that one would be a private residence, small private barns, however, might be used extraneously for the event center, for changing areas or bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. I think if you would set out each structure on the property, or proposed structure, and its proposed use as well, I think that would help the commission understand the entire PUD. I think your PD, PUD right now is too narrow, it's just focusing on one structure, when, in fact, it's much larger, in scope.
I agree, and I mean, I think what we've done is do that for a very broad utilization of the whole property, with the exemptions, and I agree, that's an error, and I think that, I mean, I think the best way to do it is, I'd like to invite them over, have an organized event, because I love showing the place off, and I want to keep it the way it is.
Well, you would have to make a request to defer this for a certain amount of time.
May I make a request to defer it for a month?
I personally think that's a great idea, and I would suggest to you that this planned unit development document is kind of the bible of what it is you want to do out there. So I would take this and sit down, and I wouldn't try to sit down with everybody that showed up at a, you know, a viewing of your barn, but maybe the homeowner association, we have some folks here that have been on the association. Your engineer is quite capable of doing this kind of.
I'm not supposed to.
Yeah. You know, and he's probably created a lot of this, but I think if you were to take this and you addressed some of the alcohol issues, the access issues, the signage, the lighting, the fireworks, you know, the parking, and do it in a little more detail than what's in here, I think that would be a great idea, and it would make them a lot more comfortable. And if you'll take some of their suggestions, maybe to heart, that will help as well. And the other thing is, it gives more people the opportunity, they can communicate and talk to the folks in their addition, and they can, you know, get a greater input on this as well. And then when you come back, you should be in a much better position to present something that, to me, would seem, you know, appropriate for the circumstances.
Only question is on timing, I mean, he suggested record, or maybe a month delay, does that affect, is that actually in a month? We haven't had a chance to meet yet, and the engineer, they haven't had a chance to revise that, they just take it another month?
You can always ask for that.
Okay, I just didn't know if it would make more sense to.
Yeah, we only, we only meet monthly, so it would make sense to do it, I think, month to month, and if you're not ready.
No, I just didn't want, yeah, the procedure would be kicking it further a little bit, that was all.
We'd prefer to take.
Yeah, that was my question, so we all need, get together, then revise, and give to you guys, in a month, it's fair, I mean.
We can delay it later.
This is my wife's chair. Is there anything else?
My, I don't know, my thing might take a little bit of time. We can defer, we can defer later.
I think we'd prefer to take one month, and then if it takes more time, we can let you know.
We have a request on the table to defer this item for a month to the next regularly scheduled meeting in September. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the request of the developer to defer to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, the second, do we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vaughn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you mind reminding the neighbors that an additional notice of the, of the genado will not be given because of the same question?
Yes, yes, you.
There won't be notices sent out for this deferment. Deferrments are not notified, so.
But our next regularly scheduled meeting would be on our website that you could see that.
September twenty-first.
Certainly.
For them to revise their PUD and then get it to you, is that enough time? I mean, I don't know how long it's gonna take, like, get it to you next week? Is that enough time for you guys to look at it?
It should be, it should be. Well, what really happens here is we have a very competent staff that try to work out all the details, ensure the legality, ensure the engineering deals, many things. We have to have road changes and what have you, so yes, that should be an adequate time. What we have in, written as one of our orders is you can't, you have to be a week ahead of time. They have to request a second deferral, which is time for word to get out that you don't waste your time and come here for something that we aren't going to talk about. Have I answered your questions there?
I think so. So who requests a second deferral if needed, is that the applicant?
The applicant.
And what, what we agreed to, what you gotta do within a certain amount of time based on their ordinance, and would be able to, would get point contact, regional association, to, to, I think, has a mailing letter. Is it would it be a contact person that you kind of, who you should talk to, so that you can order?
I'd just like to say one other thing. You have the phone number of the planning staff here, right? So I'm sure they'll answer the phone and answer your questions as far as. Well, generally, Mark, you have to.
My name is Eric.
Guys, how about Tyler? Tyler, you were the one I talked to yesterday, okay.
Okay, if I might, then we have moved along to agenda item number eight, discussion and possible action to approve, deny. The preliminary PAP PP twenty seventeen oh four of foster business parks.
Yes.
Staff, please.
I have an applicant, a letter from the applicant asking for referral, the deferral until the next meeting. I'm not sure, is there someone this week?
Okay, if we had someone here who just says so, then we'll.
Dean Colita, KBG Engineering, we request to defer for one month at the September twenty-first planning commission meeting due to an off-site drainage event that Ron Carwell suggested we obtain. Due to, basically, it's, we're gonna move the detention pond off-site to the property to the south. The owner's in negotiations with buying that property, so based on his recommendations, we need a little bit more time to work that stuff out, so.
Okay, so this has been done properly. Do we have a motion to defer this item?
I'll make a motion that we defer item number eight to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, the second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Aye.
We now go to agenda item number nine, discussion and possible action to receive the July two thousand and seventeen fee fund report, which is in your pack. Oh, you did a good job this time.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, annual registration, yeah.
Like, do we have any questions on this, or do we have a motion to receive the fee fund report?
I'll move that we receive the fee fund report.
I'll second.
We have a motion, the second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Aye.
We go, now go to item ten, new business. Is there anything that could not have been foreseen by the time this was out? Anything new? Nothing? Item eleven, adjournment. Do I have a motion, please?
Make the motion to adjourn.
A second?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
I was asking, waiting for you to ask.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Aye.
This, this meeting is closed.
Okay.
Now.
We're not done. County engineer, we got floodplain management to go through.
We don't ever do that.
Every now and then.
Okay, we'll see, you're right.
It's changing now. Okay, in accordance with our notice of meetings, a special meeting was called and was filed with the county clerk for the, on July twenty-fourth, for the Oklahoma County Floodplain Management Board to have a meeting today following our planning commission board. I don't have an agenda.
Oh.
Blue folder, ah, yes, flood manager. Okay, I've got an agenda. You're correct. Okay, so let's have a roll call.
Okay, the members of the Oklahoma County Floodplain Management Board is Mrs. Irene Martin?
President.
Mr. James Benson?
Here.
And Mr. Charles DeFuria?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Okay, item number four, approval of minutes of the previous meeting, July twenty-first, twenty sixteen.
The agenda, I mean, the minutes are in your folder on the side.
Do we have any questions, comments? I'll accept the motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
We will now go to item number five, which is an executive session for the purpose of discussing the following. A, to enter into executive session pursuant to twenty-five OS three oh seven B four, to engage in confidential communications between the public body and its attorney concerning a pending investigation, claim or action by Rex Lundie versus B O O C et al., CV seventeen three seventy-seven, and where on advice of its attorney, the board has determined that disclosure will seriously empower the ability of the public body to proceed, process the claim, or conduct a pending investigations, navigations, or proceeding in the public interest. I would need a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
I second the motion.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. DeFuria?
Yes.
Now, we're going to go to the meeting room.